This is the Record Meeting of the Eastland City Commission. It is Monday, October 20th. I will lead the prayer and ask Tom to do the pledge. Do prayers complete? Father, we thank you for our community and for all the things that are going here and all the people that make this possible. We're blessed in so many ways in Eastland that we have what we do. We thank you for that and pray that we continue to make this a great city. We pray for our state and our nation as they make rules and laws that govern what we can do. We thank you for them and the job that they're doing. Help us always, Father, to do your will, that the decisions we make tonight will be to your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one standard, God, one individual.
Thank you very much. Public comments. I have two public comments here. One of them is Jack Lambert. Mr. Jack Lambert, go right ahead, sir. You have three minutes.
All right, I, 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 you're doing a, a conference. And, uh, this is, uh, Fort, Fort Mary. Uh, and, uh, I'm probably mess you up in person. I'm known as the spirit of average. You're in Eastland for over, for, over forty years. I've been supporting the team. But here's my little statement here that I've, I've been living in a, a, a camera square apartment for, say, over three, four years. Originally, I've been having these, these road, these, uh, rosting manifestations. I've been, I've been trying to tell my, see, my manager that, uh, came around about this situation. But it started getting a little bit worse. So I was wondering if, if there's any way to convince her to keep on updating the, uh, the, the spread every month? Because I may or may not be able to fit, to make it, make it through that because I, I might, I got, uh, high blood pressure, also on diabetes. I don't want to stress, stress about that stuff, just because, just because her big niggas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you give me her information and contact information?
Yeah, I sure will.
The, thank you, they are. Uh, the other I have here is from Travis Rogers. And you can speak now, you can wait till we get to number eleven. Who is Travis Rogers?
I'm going to wait until we get to number eleven.
You'll wait to get to number eleven? Okay, he wants to speak on number eleven. Don't remind me, I've got that there. That's why I get there, I don't blow that up. Approve the minutes of, thank you. Is that going on?
Yeah, nobody would.
I'm not, I heard. Approve the minutes of the September fifteenth and the September nineteenth meeting. You've got a copy of those?
I move, we approve the minutes of the seven, the, September fifteenth and the September nineteenth meeting.
All second.
Motion from Richard and a second from Tom to approve the September fifteenth and September nineteenth minute. Any other discussion? Paul and Trevor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Financial report. Outstanding work. What do we need to know?
Excellent.
Complete, complete year. Well, it's, it's, it looks good. I, I think where we are in the city can be pretty proud of where we are right now. We're holding our own, so, uh, that's a good sign. Savannah is going to work with you on getting, uh, the grant stuff separate from the regular budget items so we can tell the difference. Uh, grant, grant things keep us from seeing a, a quick view of where we are. And if we've talked about that and we worked to get that done, it'll end up being done by next month. Making that easier on us to be able to see where we are will help. So she, she and I have already talked about that. Anybody have any other questions about the budget summary and having a complete year since ending twenty twenty-five and get us ready for twenty twenty-six? Y'all saw the sales tax numbers?
Yep.
Uh, I'll point out, sales tax is down to the twenty, it was down a little bit. It's at the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four level. And that is, if you go out and look at the end of the year, for that year, that is basically what the budget number is for this upcoming year. So we should be fine with that. It's things to travel through and you never know how that can, can change. But I feel comfortable where we are. Good work. Anybody have any questions about any of the budget, finance information? Okay. Number six, Romanujal six. The Board of City Commissioners has got to take action on the following agenda items. Uh, number one, discussing consideration to renew publicity and tourism agreements with the following entities. Number one on the list is the Community Foundation. But before we do that, who's that, Debbie? Where'd she go? Before she does that, I want to say, uh, looking at these, it highlighted that we need a standard format for everybody's benefit. I think we've got the proper information as much as we can tell, but we need to get this so standardized and, uh, Lindsay will help get us to that point as we work with her in the next quarter to, to present these forms. It'll help us as a commission to know what we're looking at instead of going to go dig out the information every time. But it's pretty the same thing for all of you and, uh, we'll, we'll work on getting a standard format. So with that, Debbie Wharton, the Eastland Community Foundation, thank you for being here. And you have a copy, I know that you've got in your packet, but you have one that's even prettier.
Yes, I like this. Hopefully everyone received one.
Okay, you may.
I tried to change some of the columns around this, Larry was saying, um, we're trying to make something a little more uniform. So hopefully, I'm, I'm all about the change on that to make it up to date. So I moved, you're comparing the two, weren't you, Larry? So the fourth quarter is moved over to the first because I had the fourth quarter listed last. So it's moved over. So the, the sheet that you have now is this year's budget, or what we've spent this year from October through September. Hopefully, that's what you, that's what we're supposed to be turning in.
Yes, that, well, I'm just looking, you've got, you now have the fourth quarter on here for this year.
Yes.
Is that what I'm looking at?
Twenty-four. The fourth quarter for twenty-four.
Okay, well, you've got, I coded December twenty-four.
Yeah.
They top where that has the quarters disregard that.
Right, that's the first quarter.
Yes, yes, disregard that. So the first, it's the fourth quarter in the first line, first line. Yes, so disregard the quarters at the top. I thought it was really confusing for me, too.
Now you see why we need a standard format, yes.
December, yes, there's where, that we don't watch. Anyway, so our categories.
One of the requests that we're asking is we all get on the October to September because that's what our budget is and that's how this all works.
Correct.
And that's where that, a little bit of confusion, but make sure everybody gets there and has that standardized.
Right.
And your categories are presented well and did good.
Did that.
Okay.
Now, I believe in your packet, uh, we have in our board packet, it, yeah, twenty twenty-six is in here, which is what we actually, you, you gave us twenty twenty-five to show us what you did.
Correct.
And you have a twenty twenty-six budget telling us what you're going to do.
Correct.
And the budget technically for you did not change.
Basically, it didn't.
Okay.
Yeah, it was basically the same.
Okay, that's good.
And it changes for us monthly on what's going on, so.
Well, you did good. We appreciate that.
Yes, so I appreciate y'all. We really appreciate the help each month. It makes a big difference for us, it really do.
Yeah, you did good. That's what, that's what we're looking for, you, what you've done and be easy to track and.
No more fire, don't worry.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Do you have any question about the, uh, what they do? Uh, that's one of the things we talked about, is we invited all of them to be here. You have any question about what she does or what her organization does and is responsible for? But she's the brains of that operation, I know her.
That's really scary. I'm happy to share any information I can. It was like a year and we don't like to think about the state, I surely don't because it's one of the worst days of my life, I really believe. But a year and ten days ago when we had our mishap.
That's fine.
So, but it's all good now, it's all good now.
We're through that and, uh, I, I guess, uh, just for people that don't know, the second floor where the stool was, uh, we're waiting to find a tenant for that and y'all will finish fixing that to their needs. Is that, is that clear?
Correct, we're going to, um, dry it in, put the walls, the ceiling and everything. And then as we get a tenant, it'll be ready to finish pretty fast.
Do the interior walls, that kind of thing to put in.
According to their needs.
That's great.
So that's an additional floor that we use?
It will, it's the second floor.
That one has been being used?
It was until our.
Until, okay, got it, got it.
Yes, yeah, so it's, it's empty, no, they did.
What you have today, you have tenants on the first floor, technically the second floor, it's available when somebody rents it, then six, seven, and eight.
Uh, seven is rented out, fully rented out, with offices, businesses, and then eight, of course, is the operator.
Is there somebody on six or?
There is not.
Nothing on six, okay.
It's, it's cleaned out.
Good.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions, anything?
Anybody up? Thank you for being here, appreciate what you do.
Sure, thank you.
You did a great job, thank you. Uh, number two is the Center for the Arts.
Um, you do have a.
Oh, we have another.
Yeah, it's not updated, it is the.
Readable?
Yes. Correct.
Yeah, we appreciate y'all's color, but when you print that in black and white, it doesn't work well.
They're meant to print it in yellow.
It is. I had to go finish packets at the police department because it's terrible.
Okay.
So there, that is a clear version for you to go over. Sorry.
And you are?
Nancy L. Cervente of the Eastland Center for the Arts, AKA We're an Art Center. Um, we gave you a very big packet with lots of information. I don't want to fill up too much time by going over all of it, but if you have any questions, uh, we kind of wanted to show, yeah, our momentum that we've been building in the last few years. We showed in building use, volunteer hours, um, cities served, attendees, or buying tickets, things like that. Um, we do also, I see, um, Mayor Vernon has his page open to the lesbian camp. Y'all had, uh, gave us money to make that happen and it was a huge success. We were hoping for maybe twenty and we had thirty kids and all of a sudden we had twenty-eight Mupulupa costumes to find. So it was quite the endeavor, but a huge success and everyone really enjoyed it.
Yeah, right.
Do you have questions about that page, uh, Mr. Vernon?
This is your budget, right? This is your city staff remaining, yada, 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 and what you spent the money on.
I'm not sure.
What, what major are you on?
What page number is that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I want to be clear.
That is showing next year's budget with the money we currently get from y'all and also what it would look like if we got a three, three hundred dollar monthly increase.
Okay. Now, if I'm reading this right, you say total utilities is eighty-nine hundred, total insurance is ninety-nine, and marketing is thirty-three fifty, right? That doesn't add up to eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, listen. Details, details. I'll, I'll talk about it with our treasurer.
Well, I thought that might be the problem, I'm not sure.
He knew how to.
Well, it, it, it's really important.
There's a reason why I'm trying to get her over there.
I normally, I normally could.
Little bros, that one good.
I normally could go, well, that's okay, we, it's not part of this deal, what we're talking about. This is the very thing we're talking about. And this adds up to twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. And if you think about what that does to your actual numbers, uh, your shop fall in twenty twenty-six has just been increased by three thousand dollars. So there is indeed a problem if you're not aware of your numbers and what you've done.
No, I'm not.
Okay, well, that's, you need to go back and revisit that. The other thing I will say to all of you that are here to, to do this, not only now, in, in the future, and we love being able to help and we're blessed that we can do that, is we need to get budget requests. Y'all've got a budget request to go up three hundred dollars and you need to get those requests in in May or June. Because we've already set our budget and what we're doing, okay?
And I was here August, I believe, or July, asking for an increase in yearly money and you did tell me to come back in October.
That was for insurance, though, wasn't it?
But we were still asking for more annual money.
Well, October.
We funded the insurance. We funded the insurance.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we made that in October with our request.
Well, we, we.
We had to come back anyway.
I apologize.
For next year, we will be back in May, June, I think our contract says July to come back.
And, and I think we told you at that time, if we can help, we will help where we can and we will get to that. When you get there and you need that, if you do, but we've got to get these budget numbers all corrected, too. So let's get all that done and we're here to help, so don't, don't panic that we're being mean and not helping. But we've got to get numbers right so we know what we're doing, so we're getting all of it as we, we know we're. Well, what y'all do is tremendous and Gary's providing me with information quite a bit that I think is really neat and helpful. Uh, he is providing, I talked about this in the meeting before, but I'll do it now with him here. Uh, we've seen where he's taking like credit card information. You know, when you put in your credit card, they always ask for your zip code. And he's provided reports about, uh, with zip code information. And it's really interesting how far and wide people are coming to Eastland, Texas.
There's a, a page in there.
Is there a page in there?
Page nine is showing that, um, all of the communities and also.
We might have a copy.
We'll talk on the budget, that thirty-three thirty-two is like, uh, the marketing.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you can see from two thousand three to, uh, twenty twenty-four that we have almost twice as many cities of people coming to the lyric, whether for the art competition or for bankhead productions. We're getting people out into the camp.
Yeah, we couldn't read these things when we had, when we did, no, that's fine, I thought y'all was following our, doing the coloring what we were trying to do. Appreciate the really nice printout. But there, you have that on page nine and it's interesting how far and wide people are coming to Eastland, Texas.
There's, there's one city called Unknown and that's the way it comes to me. So there's, there's some cards that I cannot, that don't give that information.
They don't capture?
Yeah, so there's a number there for each year of, of transactions and I don't know where they're from because I don't get that information.
That's the biggest one, but it's still. They're probably not coming from Eastland, wherever they are, whatever's going on, leave that one out.
Yeah.
Uh, have you got a total of forty-nine cities?
Yeah.
And that unknown is probably one of those, so forty-eight cities are coming to Eastland, Texas. And they're coming from, from, from pretty good distances and some of them are, are pretty good, pretty good size, that's neat.
Yeah.
What y'all are doing is wonderful, the plates and stuff you're putting on, what's next, Christmas?
Christmas Carol, December eleventh through fourteenth. And actually, our bankhead committee wrote the adaptation themselves.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, y'all, now, this is your version.
Nope.
Be a lot happier.
Kind of keeping it as.
Be a lot happier version.
Tiny Tim.
As Dickinson as possible, that's the, so.
Yeah, we're in December.
December, yes. And tickets are already on the website for sale, so don't wait.
There you go, we do that.
So I need to get you updated information. Do I email that to the city as fast as possible?
We need to get a corrected copy of, that information needs to be corrected so we can follow through with that.
Get your treasure on.
It needs to be. You'll get it, okay. Thank you, Anna. Gary, appreciate y'all, what you're doing, that's great work. All of you involved with that.
Yeah, the only other thing I might mention is that with the O-Rip Fest, which, uh, we try to have a pretty big presence there, that we had, how many people came in the doors?
A thousand, over a thousand.
A thousand people, okay, that's a way clicking for people at the door. So we had over a thousand people. That was a good show, good show. And we had four hundred and fifty of those people actually took the time to fill out a, a vote for the, like, their favorite art.
Artwork.
And, uh, that was, I thought was impressive.
How many art pieces, artwork did you have?
We had, I think, a hundred and fifteen from like sixty-plus people. And there were people who submitted artwork from Coleman, Abilene, Sweetwater, um, Benbrook, Only. And a lot of the people, that was their first time coming to Ripfest and they came because they had artwork in the show and they wanted to be there and have their families vote.
That's about, that's cool, that's really neat.
Tell those girl that did that, she did quilt. She's blind.
Yeah, she's blind.
Holy.
Yep, amazing.
I'm gonna, I'm voting for her.
Thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
I don't bring the cameras while I'm doing this. Okay, anybody that doesn't know, I prefer say that we've got me and Leah Flowers is our administrative assistant. And that's who the only employees have the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, Leah does the LED side, she does a lot of our coordinating for the parades and does a great job of it.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we designed, created, and submitted the Eastland Visitors Guide this year. We maintain an up-to-date online calendar featuring PBB events and the Chamber activities and the city meeting and the county meeting. So we're also on our, uh, so they go online and they can see all that stuff, see what's coming up. Have all the information, there are links to where we need to go. We coordinate the junior ambassador program, which is high school seniors. And, uh, we pick a new group every year and then we can, uh, event, or coordinate kind of events that they do, field trips and whatnot. They're also one of our core, uh, volunteer systems. So they volunteer for not only us, but hopefully some community events. And we just got, we get, we kind of have to rush with, you know, we get to September and then Ripfest right in October gets us going with those. We also have an adult ambassador group that is, I'm not sure how many we've got in there, about fifteen, that are representatives of different businesses in town. They're either the owners or the somebody in management kind of thing or whatever that helps us promoting the Chamber. And it's another big volunteer, uh, system to help us put on these events. Our events consist of Ripfest in October. We help with Boo in the Garden, which is hosted by the Eastland Community Foundation. Another, that's another activity that our junior ambassadors volunteer for. We have the Lighted Christmas Parade, which will be the first Saturday in December that is right in front of the, um, one-starry night that the Community Foundation puts on. Uh, Ritz-Ribs Cook-Off and Ritz-Wine Festival, both, uh, are done in April, the second Saturday, second Saturday in April. And then the Golden Deeds Award Banquet is the first Friday in June. And then we have our Business of the Month luncheons that we do every month, except we usually cut out summer because they're poorly attended in the summer, everybody's on vacation. Also, this year, I took the back foyer of the Conley and kind of turned it into a visitor center. We have literature back there, our T-shirts are displayed and mugs and different promotional stuff that we have. I'm surprised how many people we do have come through there. Then it's also, I stayed up there with it all day on the Saturday of our big, uh, all-school evening. And so people can come in and pick up all of the free literature and art magazine and all that stuff. And then I'm using my hand that I spend a lot of time telling all about Eastland, what to do, where to go. Have a lot of things to say, so I really enjoy promoting. And then we also, last year, we had, uh, I was in communication with Barry Rogers and set up, uh, Eastland, we set him up as a spotlight city. And, uh, that was Bob Malden and, uh, Mark Pittkins was interviewed and they put that up on, did an online thing there with that. Mutual Bonhals, it's not Wild, it's Wild Kingdom, but it's something else now. They came, of course, to our last year's O-Rip Fest and, uh, the parade and videoed a bunch of stuff. And I sent them an email in August to say, hey, what, what happened with that? And he wrote back and said they were still kind of in production, that he wasn't sure what, if any, what they did, that would get into it. But said it'd be a while before he knew anything and he'd write us when he did. So anyway, that's kind of what we've done all year, with the two of us and some volunteers. So we, oh, welcomed nineteen new members this year to the Chamber. And we hosted ten ribbon cuttings. And so that's kind of.
One flag, right?
And one flag, well, I think it kind of does. No, because that happened in October, that's, that's actually.
I think, we'll say that. Your, your advertising budget went up, what are you doing different in your advertising budget? It doubled.
I think, maybe that is the Chamber guide that got put into that, that, because that was quite expensive as far as publishing that and everything. And we do do a lot of, I mean, Facebook advertising for all our events, uh, the newspaper, the pay tabs, or pay RBC, different things like that. Adds up over the course of the year, but that publishing is probably, so.
Okay, that's good.
Anything else?
No, it's great, appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for you?
Tell us about the success of Rip. You worked really hard, well, that's funny.
Yes, I did. And so did Leah. And I prepared the parade when it come off, so we did a great parade.
She's a great parade.
Thank you for, uh, donating your trailer to make us a good brand, so I appreciate that. And it is people like you that come through. I had a lot of things that just came through and when I was looking for them, they showed up and, uh, had it come off real well. We had over a hundred vendors. We had, uh, I don't know, I wish I had a way to really count how many people come through there, but it's a bunch. So, but it got a little warm late afternoon and they start kind of heading home depending on the weather. Uh, but we had a really, a good turnout, a good vendor group. We had good food trucks, I think everybody was pretty pleased. I ran a, a, uh, survey after the event to our vendors and, uh, and all say, I don't remember how many, we got twenty-one back? And I'm twenty-eight. And it was twenty-eight, uh, survey answers back with, and I gave them room to, you know, any kind of, any kind of criticism, whatever. And I got some good tips. I had a lady, one of them, that sent me some stuff from another event, like, well, this is how they do it. And they, and they got some, uh, they had some good information. I am all about, tell me what, what you see, what, what we need to change or what worked well, what didn't. And, uh, most of it, you know, worked, worked well, the, and our responses were very heavy. I'll say, you know, there was one or two that weren't happy with, it was kind of funny because I'd get some that would say, well, that, like, that, it wasn't really the crowd. I kind of really had a question with, with how the, uh, thing was worded. But it was kind of like as though they didn't seem to think it was as busy as last year. And then others would complain because the lines were too long and coming up the booths and, you know, so I'm like, I'm unhappy if you don't have that. If we have too much, so, uh, but yeah, I took all, I really appreciated having the feedback on Rip. It really gave me some things to.
Did you feel like it was a bigger crowd than in the past?
I, I don't know, it seemed really.
I think it was.
There, at the, at the noon, two hours when it was going on, it was, it was pretty crowded and.
Normally, it thins out when you go back toward the auto show thing and it was.
No, it was spilling away.
Well, and that's what we changed back this year. And my whole point was because we have so many vendors and I was kind of moving them onto Auto Street, well, then I'm wanting to push the traffic back that way. So not only did we have the, uh, car show back there, but we put that big slide, uh, Barrett Thompson's, that all his inflables were out there. And that was great working with him. He, he, you know, we had a lot of stuff, I think the kids, we did good on Kid Street, it's probably, a lot better last year. And, uh, so, but by probably, you know, we doubled what we did last year at Kid Street.
Thank you. Chamber was a big part of it, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for doing all the work.
Camera back on, off.
Thank you, Judy, appreciate it. Uh, next is the County Museum.
Here you go.
You furnishing a magnifying glass?
You need to talk to Robert about this.
Oh, I will.
Yeah. I can't make heads to tell nothing to you myself, so.
Well, this is one of them that, that stands out that we've got a problem in that one of them doesn't have the last quarter of last year. Uh, you started with January and we need to see, and we talked about. But why on earth do we have a year to date in every column, every month?
Walker Coverhouses do.
I'll train Robert.
Please do, please, if you would like.
Yeah. It's a one-page, no, it's a one-page, yeah, it's inside there, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I increased mine, so.
Well, your numbers, your numbers look good, it's just hard, very difficult to, to sort, pull out. And we don't have, you're missing a quarter, so if we can get that updated, uh, and get that done.
Give us, give us a chance, we should do that.
Anyway, we can, we'll, I'll mention that to him if you want me to, I don't mind.
Sure, yeah.
It'd make it, then it can be pretty bigger.
Yeah.
Kind of take out, you've got, you know, ten extra columns we don't need.
Absolutely.
That's your numbers. They, they look fine as far as what you're doing and appreciate what you guys do over there.
But we're, we're really happy. We've, we've had, the last year, it seems like, or the last couple of years, we've had some really good, um, events, you know? Um, I think our, you know, we still get calls from people, our people come in that. I think our, you know, we still get calls from people, or people come in that saw us on the Pickers. And that was in twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah.
You know, and then now then they're coming in and calling us on the Day Tripper, which was last year. So, ticket exposure has really been great. And some of the exhibits that we're having, we're having, we have a clip display that ends this Saturday. It drew a lot of people from Rip, from all Rip Fest. In fact, I think the lyric had lots of people asking, where was the clip display? So that's been really, a lot of fun having that. In November, we have an exhibit coming from the International Women's Air and Space Museum. And it's on the women of World War II. And that's next month. So we're excited about that.
Sweetwater Texas.
Well, no, it's not. This one's actually in Illinois.
Oh, is it?
Yes, it's an international museum, so.
Okay, we'll get a better call.
And then in December, we're gonna, we're gonna close again for the winter and keep our electric bill down. We tried to stay open this last year, but just the electric heat, trying to heat that building, it really hurts us. So we'll close probably end of November. We'll be open two Saturdays in December to have photos with Santa. And then we'll be getting ready for our annual casino fundraiser, which last year was our first and it was a lot of fun.
If we raise enough money to pay your electric bill.
Yeah, definitely, so.
Still have any renters over there?
We have the Workforce Solutions and Cornerstone Action Agency. They share a suite up there.
So the electric's each separate?
No, it's all, it's all on one. It's, we, we're one meter for us. We looked at trying to separate it out, but to do that, Encore wants to upgrade the transformer that's at the back of our building, and that's forty thousand dollars.
About the museum being closed, it goes down, yes?
It does, because we don't have to heat the museum as much, the museum proper, you know.
Now, what's the deal about the transformer at the back of it?
There's a transformer, our power is from a pole over here at the bank. And it runs underground and it feeds that block. There's one behind Jim Kennedy's and it blew up a couple of months ago and they had to come in and replace it. We had no power on that block for almost twenty-four hours at some point. And there's another one that's right behind the museum that feeds the museum. And to replace that, if we wanted to upgrade, to put more meters on that third floor, they would have to upgrade that and it would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars over in that transformer. So we just keep hoping it may, it'll burn itself out and Encore can replace it like they did the other ones.
Does yours feed off the other one? Is it the?
They do, they, it does. It does, so.
Okay. Anything else for Terry? Thank you, appreciate it.
There y'all.
Another asset for our community, appreciate it.
Yes.
Uh, five R's.
Hello, I'm Derek Salcedo, I'm the treasurer for Eastern Products Association, the P A R over here. And just kind of wanted to go over some of the high points for last year and then kind of talk about the budget for this year and why you might notice, you know, some large differences there, especially under repairs and maintenance. So looking at last year's report there, again, our budget was forty-seven thousand dollars for the category that, that city taxes is allowed to, we're allowed to expense the city tax. So advertising, promotion, supplies, retail, repairs, and maintenance. Again, we budgeted forty-seven thousand dollars at the end of the year at just under sixty-seven thousand five hundred. The big one there, you know, where the largest change or difference came from was repairs and maintenance. And you'll see quite a bit of it occurred in Q four for the, based on the city's fiscal year, seventeen thousand. And I'll kind of tell you, there are basically two things that happened there. One, we're replacing the carpet in the theater, which was about thirteen thousand dollars. And there's still about three thousand dollars left on that. And then the other is we had to replace our ice maker. And that was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that's where the majority of that seventy-two thousand dollar bulk expense came from in Q four. Looking at next year's budget, again, you'll see the top three categories, advertising, promotion, supplies, and utilities are more or less in line with what twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five was. The big difference is repairs and maintenance of forty-eight thousand dollars compared to the budget of last year, ten thousand dollars. And I'll tell you, the big, the two big categories that make up that difference, and these are things that are pretty critical that we'll have to look to give a place soon, is one of our H-Back compressors. We did already get a bid on that, fifteen thousand dollars was the bid. And then also our server for our projector. Technician came out and had to make some repairs back in August, I believe. And he basically told it, it's on its last leg. And so we went ahead and got a quote to replace the server and that's ten thousand dollars. And so just between those two categories, looking at twenty-five thousand dollars. And then there's just some other items that make up the remaining of that forty-eight thousand dollars, as well as just the general budget. It is an old building, as you can imagine, so there's always something breaking down on it. But between the curtains and want to do some minor remodels there, just to spruce up the theater a little bit. Ultimately, we came up with a budget of forty-eight thousand dollars for repairs and maintenance for this current fiscal year.
Okay. Uh, what, oh, the projector, how old are those projectors?
Well, the projector itself, let's see, we actually replaced it not too, well, I'll say not too long ago. But it's not the actual projector itself, it's the server itself that we have to replace. And so that's completely.
That's all the digital stuff, right? It's all tech.
And again, quote from the technician, it's on its last leg.
Do you know how old it is?
I don't.
I mean, it's time flies and you're having fun and it's old.
I know it's over ten years old. It's old, but I don't know how, how old the actual server is.
I remember when they did that, I was just curious how they work. Anybody have any questions for Derek? What have you got? I thought you were doing a great job and good budget, good, good plan.
So you're on the board then, is that right? Who is the manager now?
Uh, so it's Brian Hawke.
So he's back on now?
Yes. There's some questions, I hate for Jake to get away, he's sitting on the floor over here.
He's down low.
He's on the board too. Are you the president of the board now?
I'm treasurer.
You're treasurer? What are you? Floki? Jack of all trades, master of none? Okay, thank y'all. You know, I love the majestic, that's great. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate y'all being here. Good work. Uh, the Austin McLeod Museum. Anybody here do anything for that?
They are not here. They do not have anybody to come. Is that correct, Rhoma?
Right, sure.
I know what they do in Austin McLeod Museum. Well, they've got a good budget, oh, what they? They've got a good budget. Well, they gave a breakdown, kind of funny. Uh, but back on, there's a page here that shows their twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six projected budgets. That's what they're doing. The numbers are one, two, third page back actually is what we were looking for. Do they have any questions about any of that that we need to ask them? They good? All right. Thank y'all, appreciate it. Number two, item number two, discussing consideration to approve the twenty-twenty, like, twenty?
Are you going to take a motion?
Motion, you want to accept all of it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just a minute. I'm, I'm, I made the motion to approve all of the agreements as presented.
I'll second.
There's some corrections that need.
Yeah, we need a correction made on it, yeah.
On the lyric?
On the lyric, yeah. With the, with the corrections made on the lyric.
Okay. That a motion, Richard, to accept all of the contracts and with the needed corrections and make a second by Tom, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Item two, discussing consideration to approve the twenty-twenty-five contract for Eastern County for dispatch services. How you doing?
Hi, y'all. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
I just thought it was weird, but I don't know what, I don't know what to ask. I don't know what to ask. Uh, we have the contract, you've got a copy of it, read it. Does anybody, who would know, who can answer that question? Why is Ranger College not part of the dispatch deal?
The sheriff.
Cisco College is one, huh?
The sheriff will answer that, I believe.
The sheriff? Do you have any idea?
I think they handle their security stuff there.
Quite in-house, yeah.
Oh. But this is a dispatch contract.
Right. Who would they dispatch out there?
Question we can kind of answer.
That's interesting. Okay. So if they ever need help, they just gotta go get it from us?
Yeah.
They're right, they're right, they're right, they're right, they're right, they're right, they're right. And I think that all anything that major happens happens to Ranger V D. So I'm assuming the city ranger has a contract with them.
So how is Cisco College different?
They have their own.
They're bound for sport.
They have their own separate law enforcement.
Okay, all right, that makes sense to us then. I hope you know that was a different thing, that's good.
This contract did not change from last year's contract. And the money that we budgeted for is for this contract amount.
Okay. So what was the budget for? Do they have any questions?
I made the motion, we approved the twenty-twenty-five contract for Eastern County for dispatch services.
Motion, Richard, and second one, Shirley, to approve the twenty-twenty-five contract for Eastern County for dispatch services. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Number three, discussing and considering to approve the twenty-twenty-five contract for Eastern County for firefighting services.
Same with this contract, this did not change from last year to this year. And we budgeted this money in here. The amount listed.
And that's what we get from them.
Correct. It's an income on a.
Thirty thousand a year.
That's not much.
Yes.
Yeah, they pay after this week. They talk to all the rules and try something with it, huh?
No.
And, well, you see what we're fixing to agree to. Sean Brightman is our new fire chief, by the way, plays here. So I'll just hand that to him, but he fixed it.
It's the same as last year.
It's the same as last year, yes.
Yes, it's the same as last year.
Same amount and same contract.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
A motion, Tom, and a second from Richard, for the twenty-twenty-five contract for Eastern County for firefighting services. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item number four and item number five are being moved out. We've got to do something else before we can handle that business. But we're going to move those two, four and five, will be moved to the November meeting and be handled there. Uh, so we, item number six, discussing consideration to approve a resolution twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen for Airport Fuel Farm, moving the fuel farm from where it's present location to just north of the building out there.
The terminal.
Terminal. So that's what that's about.
I did ask Bobby to be here for any questions.
Is he here?
He is, sir.
Any questions?
This project has been in the works for three years, four years. And now TechStop has sent a resolution over. They're actually working on this. And in order for funding, ninety percent of the funding to be allocated, we have to do the ten percent match. So it's a seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar project, ten percent match is seventy-seven thousand dollars. And that will be over the course of two years, not in one year.
Is that, is that the budget?
Before that?
No, it will be next year.
Did we get paid the seventy-seven before?
No, ma'am. It will be paid next year, uh, the next year.
But I mean, before we paid the seventy-seven?
No. And we'll start working on it. And as we progress through, there will be, we don't pay that all upfront. It'll be completed in fiscal year in twenty-six.
I guess what I'm asking is, the grant itself, will it come to us before beginning of the project? Or after, or during?
During, yes.
And if one of the, we get paid as we complete work?
Yes.
Yes. This project used to be on seventy-five, twenty-five, but TechStop changed the funding to be ninety-ten, which is really good for our community because they're small for the funding part of it. So that's, it's a win-win for us on.
Well, to Sir Shirley's question that she's made in my brain is, so we have next year, you'll budget thirty-eight thousand five hundred, which is half of that, to be, and we have to pay that to them. So, yeah, we're a serious type of deal, I don't know what the hell that was.
Yes, it's, have you ever done one of these with, we've not ever done one of these with TechStop. So the way that I understand it is, part of it is allocated this year. And I think it's, next year is forty-seven thousand dollars is allocated and the difference of that is allocated current. And then next year is the remaining forty-seven.
So thirty thousand this year and forty-seven this year.
Yes.
Thirty thousand this year?
Yes.
Is that already allocated in our budget?
No, that would be out of.
Police department.
Fire department.
At a reserve.
Too quiet.
This one, yes, because this was intended to be done with ARPA funds. And ARPA had to be spent prior to year-end. So now this is rolling out and their, TechStop is just now moving on the project to have this completed.
We still have ARPA funds available.
No, you do not. ARPA had to be expended. So that's why this is now a general fund project. This is a, do you want to talk about the safety that you've had with where it's currently, the fuel farm currently?
What it is, is the F A A has reasonably built a new ramp, moved in the fuel farm to begin with this project started when Ron Duncan was in the, visiting here a long time. The F A, this is called Runway Safety Area. Anything within the center line of the runway to five hundred feet on the side of the runway has to be cleared. Uh, if you've seen any airplane that skids off the runway and goes off in the grass, that's a good thing, no one gets hurt. Right now, our fuel farm is a direct target. We saw the, the Motley Crue plane that was skid off the runway at Scottsdale last year. Hit the other plane that was within that area. That's where the F A is, they're pounding bigger airports. We're a small airport, so therefore they're giving us time. And I've worked with TechStop Oklahoma City, told them about our tornado, the damage we had. They're giving us time to get this completed, to move it. So that's part of the project, why we moved the fuel farm away from the center of the facility. So when people land and have the safety area. One time I was feeling, last year, one-seventy-two, a student pilot bounced off the runway and came right, skidded his brakes and almost hit the F A S. I was standing right there. And so it's, it's, it's possible. Now, who knows when or who, what's going to happen, but that's part of the project. And the original project we built that is a hundred-foot width span. Well, we tried to get TechStop back then to approve, like, in a bigger, but they wouldn't do it. So, and now we, when we got ready to move the fuel farm, there's not enough room to taxi a plane in, inside that area. And we're getting some bigger planes into our fuel area that come to hunting, fishing, things like that in our community. And it's going to be very difficult for safety of them not to get stuck in the mud. And that's what this whole expansion area is, to make sure they can taxi in by our fuel area and, and add to our economics of our town and, and for safety, that's what it's about.
So this year, I apologize, this year is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, look, when you say this year, you're talking about twenty-twenty-five?
Correct.
Or the budget year? Twenty-twenty-five, this year is seventeen thousand.
The budget year. This budget year, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to clarify. So this year is seventeen thousand, okay.
Which will come out of reserves.
Yes. And then, um, twenty-six, twenty-seven is the remaining.
Sixty.
Sixty thousand. Okay.
Which will be in your next budget year.
It'll be in it. And you can budget for that.
Correct.
Not that you, oh, you can budget for it anyway.
Correct.
So this is going to be like a two-year project?
Correct.
Is what you're getting made.
Year one.
When will they start?
They, we have to complete this. We'll have a meeting after all this, if it's approved, we'll have a meeting at the end of the month where I will get more timeline. Their first year, the first year is, um, going over the project and year two is construction.
Yeah, entertain the motion, anybody here who wants to pick, well, either way.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen to partner with Tech Stop to provide a fuel farm at the Houston units we're up for.
I'll second that.
Motion of Tom and second from Richard for approve the list of twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, any other discussion?
One brief note, this weekend, the E A chapter is having Young Eagle event for young kids to learn how to fly at the airport all day. So anyone wants to come out, watch, participate, if anyone's knew Mr. Keith Yeager, he passed away about a month ago. We're gonna have a, at ten o'clock, we're gonna have an honor flight and a missing man flyover at ten o'clock, Saturday morning. The weather's good, in honor of Mr. Keith Yeager. Mr. Keith Yeager was a class of nineteen fifty-eight, uh, at the Naval Academy. Uh, because of medical stuff, he went through the B D T two for thirteen years flying the Newcom board. If you wanted to meet the man who had the hand on the red button, the Moscow, he was it. He retired, went to the airlines, retired, his wife Selena moved here because the airport's closer to new home in Morton Valley. They spent, uh, ten plus years going to Craig, Alaska, doing King Seven fishing, then they lived here. Well, the day he passed, he was on a shredder, went to lift a door, and something happened where he didn't, he didn't make the day. He went out with his boots on, so to speak. He was a man of honor, integrity, so we're gonna honor him on Saturday, so if anyone wants to come out, please do.
Thank you.
And when you mentioned kids, does that extend to older kids too?
Yeah, but that, they have to sign up for it, but there is, there's, there's, you come out, come, come, come on, come on out. We have, we have, uh, we have, uh, we have the, a bunch of people from the Elmdale Air Park, or do Young Eagle flights, or do Smoke On flights. And then we're gonna have a guy with a biplane, he's gonna, he's gonna do the missing man part in honor of Keith. And I've called my friends, Ezeels and Breckler, and if there's any warbirds in there, he's gonna let me know, and we might have some of those flyover too. Uh, not, nothing for sure on that, but we've requested it and we'll see what happens. But Keith was. Ten o'clock Saturday morning. So please come out.
You don't stand next to the fuel farm with a student pilot.
And that, that just, it just, it just, uh, it's about safety, uh, the part seventy-seven of FAA building of airports and stuff. We grandfathered in because where we're at, but as our airport grows, they're wanting, requesting that we have to move it. And that's one reason we designed things the way, where they are now, so that way we'll never have a problem again for safety.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, we've got a motion and a second for approval of the fuel farm, moving the fuel farm. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion carried, thank you very much, Bobby, for all you're doing, great, great work, it's a neat asset. Item number seven, discussion consideration, authorize the city manager to sell by bid process surplus vehicle and equipment. And you've got a list of what those are and actually picture of what those are.
So these three are just, um, police department vehicles that will be completely decommissioned prior to being listed. Um, in the future, it's kind of my attention that there's other department heads that have other things that need to be listed, so it will be a, we'll list these and then we'll come back for other items that we request.
I think they've been replaced?
These are, have already been replaced, yes.
Obviously been replaced.
Did you say these will be sold and then we'll do the other thing, you're gonna get everything together and then give off?
We're gonna do these because it's on, uh, government deals and they, you know, you can list one or fifty or however many.
Okay.
It's on, on auction.
You're getting these.
Yeah, and the buyers, so the buyers premium, so we get the full amount that we are asking for it, there's nothing taken out.
I believe we, uh, make a motion to approve, we authorize the city manager to sell by bid, bid process, surplus vehicles and equipment.
Motion from Richard and a second from Michael J, to approve the.
If I buy this, do I have to take the stickers off?
No, that will. We will take that all off.
City manager to sell this vehicle and equipment, any other discussion? All in favor say aye, pose the same sign.
Leave the lights on, cause heart attacks.
Uh, items number eight and nine, we have to move, uh, we've got things we've gotta take place before we do this. This is, these things being moved will be on that November third meeting at noon. That's why we're having a call meeting on that day, right?
Correct, yes.
Reading the ordinances?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, they've gotta have a.
Public hearing, we've had two public hearings.
Get the public hearing done, so.
Yeah, okay.
We have one, but not the other.
So that's what we'll, those will be moved in November, those things will be moved in November, is that November?
November third at noon.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, did we something that we've only discussed?
Um, I believe D and Z did, I don't know that we have discussed these.
Since it's gonna be a new meeting, it will probably be available for as long, I mean, not everybody will be here getting them, so.
Um, the first one, Tony, do you wanna talk about, yeah, just give them an overview and then they know what the third.
The, uh, the items, was it eight and nine?
Yes.
These have to do with the old Rescare building, which is on the corner of.
Mulberry.
Mulberry and Valley, it's across the street from the, uh, funeral hall. And so what it is, is that building's been empty for about a year, Rescare left, uh, shut down there. It's just been sitting there kind of, all start to fall apart. Uh, Clint Coffee purchased the building, and he's wanting to get it rezoned in order to remodel it into a residential space. And he also, uh, would like to make it a duplex, so he's also asking for a specific use in order to, because it's a large building, it can make two comfortable, uh, little spaces there, so that's what he's looking to do. And, uh, that area, just a little quick presentation is, that whole block, for the areas that are not owned by the Baptist Church, are residences. So it's not really outside of the realm of possibility and across the street on Valley, it's its own single family anyway. So we wouldn't really be, you know, putting a wrench in the hole.
Here you go.
That's good, oh, good.
Thank you Shirley.
So we'll move those, that's what the November third meeting is about, and that will be at noon as we have a plane right now. Item number ten, discussion consideration, first reading, board number twenty-five dash nine-two-three, in order to the city of Easton, Texas, in meeting chapter nine, notices to all sex offenders of the Eastern Code of Ordinances to increase the restrictions of residence of sex offenders to two thousand feet and places children calmly together, providing a penalty clause, providing a repealing clause, providing servability clauses, and providing the effective date.
Uh, Chief Fitz and I have worked on this ordinance, and this ordinance changes the standard one thousand feet, and it increases it to two thousand feet. Um, do you have anything to add, Chief Fitz?
Uh, no, so this, I mean, this is, uh, we're just increasing it from one thousand to two thousand feet, if y'all agree to it. This covers more of our city, it's allowed to keep sex offenders out of our city even better. If it was up to me, we would not have it in the city at all, but this is the max I could do by state law, so that's what I'm asking for, it's two thousand feet, keep them waiting in place, children together. It's the same ordinance we have in place, we're just extending it to two thousand instead of one thousand.
Is that over the state limit?
No.
Let's see, we.
Be state level. But.
I'll make a motion to approve it, approve ordinance twenty-five dash nine-twenty-three.
Got a both, we got a motion of Tom and a second from Michael J, to approve ordinance twenty-five dash nine-two-three, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion carried, thank you. Uh, item number eleven, discussion consideration, first reading, board twenty-five dash nine-two-four, in order to the city of Easton, Texas, in meeting chapter seventeen, traffic and motor vehicles of the Eastern Code of Ordinances, who adopt an article eight golf cart to allow the limited operation of golf carts within the city, establishing regulations for such operation, requiring a permit, providing a penalty, providing repeating and servability clauses, and providing an effective date. You have that, so. Would you like to, Travis Rogers, you wanna give us your comments first, and you have three minutes to do so.
Alright, I mean, I worked on this with, with Anna when she's over at Ranger. I restore old golf carts, she's at Old Rip, you saw the purple one that was up front, the Royal ride, I, I redone that one for my dog. And when she's, she lives here in Easton, so I've got kind of involved with Easton a little bit, and, uh, I'm trying to get this ordinance passed, because it started with fuel prices, that's why I have, you know, for a long time I drove one, because I worked at the college at Ranger, so I drove one back and forth for a long time, because I was told the city had an ordinance. And then this sweet lady reminded me one time that, no, they didn't, so I parked it. But I work on them once in a while, so I've been getting with her, because my daughter has one here and she wants to drive it back and forth to the school to drop her kids off, and, uh, I may, I may have lost, because I don't know exactly what she's put down on the ordinance. One thing's I requested was, kids under the age of ten have seatbelts. I put seatbelts on hers, because I got two grandkids, and I wanted to make sure they didn't fall off. And, uh, her golf cart has all the reforms that the state has, plus some, it has windshield, which is not required. I put seatbelts on it, and I'm really trying to get this done here, so I could get it done at Ranger. The only thing I'm gonna do different Ranger is I'm gonna want a, the city to come up with a little permit, so when I'm working on one, I could test drive it, without having to put a license plate on it and all that stuff, I could test drive it, say, on my, on the street I live on only. And I'd like to get that done here too, because if someone wants to do a golf cart, the problem is, is you don't know if it's gonna work if you go down the road with it. It might, deck on the jacket, might spin the tires ninety to nothing, but if you do it on the road, it might go ten foot stop.
I understand.
Problem I have with hers is, it had issue with the brakes, looked in, first time she brake, it'd lock up. So it's hard for me to work on it in Easton, because I couldn't test it until the day of the parade. Luckily for me, it survived the parade. Over the price of gas, you know, and a lot of people don't realize that, most people just drive the cars that are stored in back, that's the worst thing you do to a car. It wears them out really quickly, with a golf cart, we might use a friendly car.
Okay, you see, with retirement, it's. Thank you, uh, appreciate it.
Do we have anything right now currently in place?
No.
No.
Uh, Chief Fitz?
No ma'am, we don't.
This was brought to my attention, first, the Chamber of Commerce was interested in, and I've had several other people bring this to my attention for the golf carts. Uh, of course, my first reaction was, I don't wanna be chasing golf carts all around town, but we've got enough interest in it, and there's a state law that does provide to allow for golf carts. But it also provides that the city can be more restrictive than what the state is, and that's what I wanted to make sure that we put some things in here that would make our streets safer. One of the things that we put in was they're gonna have to have liability insurance, they're gonna have to be inspected by us, by the police department, and then we will provide them with a sticker that says it's been looked at by a police officer, and it has all the requirements that it needs. Um, we went off other city ordinances, and ours is seven or six, I can't remember, on the age, that a kid has to be.
Years of six on the age for seatbelt?
Yeah, so any, any child under the age of six years of age has to be in a seatbelt. I agree with Travis, Travis worked for Tech Stop for a long time, I don't know if y'all knew that or not, we worked together out on the highway a lot. He's seen a lot of the same things I've seen, so, uh, but we went with what majority of the other cities have. I think this is a great thing for people if it's done right and they don't abuse it. Uh, the ordinance allows us to have a little more teeth in it with the city, it also allows us to limit where it can be. We don't want these on our industrial area out east at all, so we have put in some restrictions like, uh, anything east of the Leon River Bridge, nothing, no, no golf carts out there, nothing north of the railroad tracks, uh, nothing past the radio station, nothing past, uh, of course, you can't even get to there, you can't drive these up and down state highways. We can't allow them to drive up and down state highways, they can cross, they can't drive them up and down. So Daughtry Street on six, we don't have to worry about them out there, and anywhere that the speed limit is over thirty-five mile an hour anyway.
So you can't drive this on Main Street at all?
At all, you can cross Main Street, but you cannot drive on Main or six. You cannot drive them on.
What about, what about Seaman Street?
So that's state highway.
No, that's state highway, Seaman Street is a state highway. We don't own Seaman Street, we don't own, man.
Still around in, on streets, on our, on houses are, or just our.
General residential trees.
Be back in the residential areas, like taking your kids back and forth to school, you can go to the grocery store, you can come down and you could cross, uh, there in front of Black City Hall, cross here, go across, look, share them back, but you can't drive them up and down the street, you cannot drive them on sidewalks at all. Um, so they'll be limited in where they can take them, but this just allows us to have, we're, we're staying with all the state requirements and adding a few more, like they will have to have financial responsibility, I feel like if somebody hits your vehicle out there and it's, it's very likely they will have a crash at some point, they need to have the same insurance on that vehicle as they would have any other. Um, I'll have to look at it Travis, but I think that as far as you driving them up and down the road, you're gonna fall under state law anyway, so it's gonna be just like a mechanic, you can drive them a certain distance from your shop, I think they'll be fine there. Um, so if you, I mean, do y'all have any more questions on them than that, this does not include A T Vs, you cannot drive A T Vs in town.
So it's side by side?
No, side by sides, no four-wheelers, none of that stuff.
Why is the side by side excluded?
Just that is correct, we would have people getting hurt.
Go too fast.
They go way too fast, yeah, these are limited on how fast they can go. I'm not thrilled, I mean, I've worked a lot of racks in my days, I'm telling you, we get one of these hit by a dually or something, it's gonna be a bad thing, but. They move slow normally, the people that are driving golf carts aren't driving silly, so.
You haven't seen the ones going.
Excluding the golf, what's your own golf working doing?
Is there a revocation clause in here, that if they don't abide by these, they can lose their permit?
Yes.
So that don't.
And they have to abide by, you have to abide by all state laws anyway, so they, they're gonna have to drive on the road, and if they violate, if they run a stop sign, if they don't use a blinker, if they don't do, I mean, they, they gotta abide by the laws.
Live with license, yeah.
So, and they have to be a licensed driver, and that, the licensed driver will have to be listed on our form, we were making that form up today.
I wanna take my child to school, and I've got two children, and I've got a golf cart that's got room, I go so soon for three people, and that's legal.
The only.
Only got the one bench seat.
You can only put, whatever that golf cart is designed to carry is what you can carry. If that golf cart's designed to carry four people, you cannot put five people in it, it's only what it is designed to carry.
Okay, I'm not being picky here, but a bench seat golf cart is designed to carry two adult people. I'm driving mine, and I've got two children, and we can all three fit in that golf cart, fine, are we gonna let that go?
How old are the kids?
I'm taking them, it's little children, the golf cart is wide enough for three children.
They gotta have a seatbelt.
Okay, no, they're both six years old, and they're small.
If they're both six hundred, they gotta have a seatbelt on them.
No, it's under six. No person younger than six years of age may be transferred to golf cart unless restrained by a dealer. I've got two six-year-old grandkids, twins, cute as they can be, and I'm driving them to school, they're good, bench seat.
Who stops them, me or one of my rookie officers?
So they can do it as long as it's a rookie officer, not you.
No.
No, I'm not being picky, but I want us to be reasonable.
I think if they're safe, the way the ordinance is written up, it has to be what that golf cart is designed to do. So if it's a bench seat, it's designed three, then three's max.
So we'd have to have three seatbelts?
Yes.
If, if they're under the age of six.
Well, that's.
No, you, you, as long as you don't have anybody five years younger, if they're six, they're okay.
Six, six, they're under that.
No, under six, that's under six, no person under six, don't touch five.
And y'all, y'all have the right to, you cannot make this, and it's been held up in the court system, you can't make it more lenient than the state does, but you can make it as restrictive as you want.
I'm not, I'm not making it more lenient, I'm telling you that the opinion of what it's designed for, golf carts are not designed for three people in the front seat, but I can, I can safely put an adult and two children in it. So if we're gonna do this, we need to make sure people understand, you can only have two people in a one-seat golf cart.
That's the way it's written up, so if that's what it's designed to do, that's what we're doing. It, it's not, and it calls them, it's just like an old, you know, you get a nineteen forty-seven pickups, only required to have one tillight. So that's all that, in nineteen forty-seven, it was required, yeah, so whatever it's designed to do, that's what we'll do, I see what you're getting at, but.
Well, I want us to be smart about it, we're gonna let them do it. I, I went to, Kathy and I went and played golf in Peachtree City, Georgia. Peachtree City, Georgia is a golf cart, you pull up to the right lot, there's a golf cart sitting right there, and there's one right here, and one over here. You go to the mall, they show up the ice cream shop, and everybody's in their golf cart. You go to the high school, all the kids drive golf carts to high school, it's the craziest thing I've ever seen, and these are not your mama's golf carts, these are ours. You know, four-seat, big, long, I mean, there, there is a town that, I mean, for whatever reason, Peachtree City, Georgia does that. I'm just, the only thing I want us to be fair about is, I know we, we stopped somebody, won't use names, had kids hanging off of it, uh, being dangerous and unsafe and could have killed somebody if they'd have fallen off of it.
Yeah.
That's obviously what we don't want to happen with it.
Yeah.
But if you're taking your kid to school, and you've got two little children, and everybody is safe, and they're not about to fall out, I think, I hope we have enough sense to say, okay.
Common sense, common sense.
Yeah.
Thank you, I wanted you to use that word.
So you mentioned, based on how the vehicle is designed to be, when we're talking about the amount of seats.
Yes.
What if it was sold as a single, or a, you know, a single bench seat, but somebody's now modified it to put one of those little jump bump seats on the back of it?
Right. It, it's, it's gonna go back to what it's designed to carry, so if it's got, if that's an add-on, it's not part of it. But in some of the places like Granberry, at the con plantation, a lot of those people buy their golf carts, it's already, they have two seats in the back instead of a place to put their bags. And they travel to all over the shore, and we can add that, you wanna add in. Yeah.
Well, you got, you can get a three-seat, you can have a golf cart with six people, and they're legal, or even bigger, if that's what they're designed for, fine, my point is, the bench seat is designed for two adults.
For kids.
Well, well, I mean, that's why, that's where I'm asking you some common sense.
I'm obviously gonna use discretion.
If you wanna talk about golf carts, what they're designed for, they're not designed for children, because children can't drive them on a golf cart, golf ball.
Is there a section in there that talks about the PD has to inspect it, give it a sticker?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a lot of these questions can be answered whenever PD does the inspection, because if they're driving without the sticker, they're already informed.
And you can tell when they get.
We're gonna make sure that we do a pretty good campaign on making sure this gets out to everybody.
Yes, it's this right here, that's why you have the.
They got the gas on the engine, you got the woman.
We have, y'all have. This, this right here, this right here is a thing, y'all have in front of you, this with the gray, it's actually got some changes from what's in your package. Uh, and there, there are the changes are marked for you, you can see that. If you wanna look at that real quick. I'm not sure what that is.
That's just a, that, this is a typo change, this, we have a city of Eastland, and number in, number.
So if it's allowed by Texas law currently? Do we have any way of enforcing it now, without this?
Just the state law. We have kinda.
You can invoke the state law.
But it just, you gotta, it, right now, we have state law until we put this in there.
State law is very broad.
State law is very broad, yes.
So if somebody, if you saw somebody out there driving one now, the state law allows for it in certain, certain areas.
But does the state law require it to be outfitted the way you've defined it, and do they have to have a?
Almost every one of the mechanical deals is straight with state law, two lights, turn signals, stop lights.
You gotta have headlights, you can't drive it at night.
I'm, I'm just concerned because, you know, I, I grew up going out to the Colorado River, and going to all these places in Arizona, and seeing people. And golf carts are a big thing, people fix them up, do a lot of things to them, but they get way out of hand real quick. And I know in a controlled golf community where it's a, you know, it's designed around that, you have more mature individuals doing it, it's not as big of a risk. I'm just concerned that we have a situation where we're gonna allow this to, to cause issues.
My, I have the exact same concern, and what I would tell this council is, if we get two years down the road, and we start having a lot of crazy crashes, I'm gonna be back in front of you asking you to restrict it completely, which you can do. You can make it as restrictive as you want, of course, I've held that, so if I could, if we end up having the little kids get hurt, and people don't do this right, I'll come back in front of the council and ask you to ban them citywide.
So let me, let me just say this again, so state law already allows them, so right now.
But you can be more restrictive.
By us not doing anything, then they would already be allowed.
They would already be allowed.
But by doing this, we will have more restrictions.
We, we give them that to you, we can make them have insurance, we can do the seatbelts, we can do the things, and we can keep them off of certain areas. You can be as restrictive, there are some cities that go in and say you can't do it anymore.
Right now, are they allowed on certain, certain areas?
Yes, legally.
That we wouldn't allow.
They can drive on state highway?
No.
No. They can cross them.
Okay.
When you say in the state allows it, the state allows you to, as long as you meet their minimum requirements, to operate it on backstreet. You still can't drive down a state highway, you can't drive through.
So we're just putting more restrictions?
We're just putting more restrictions.
Travis, you had a question.
State law requires you can drive, if you live within two miles of a golf course, you can drive to and from the golf course.
It doesn't say whether it's open or not, it just says a golf course.
I had to check my odometer, yeah.
Which controls the route up the east and there.
I really think this can be a good thing for our citizens, and if like, Chamber of Commerce spoke to me one time about giving one to run back and forth and do the work they do, I think it'd be a great thing. But like I said, if it gets out of hand, and you start having problems.
Are you going to order some signs that you can sell for people, slow-moving vehicle signs, and have some, say, hey?
They'll, they'll have to buy their own slow-moving vehicle signs, what we're gonna provide is a sticker, and they'll come down, and there's a fee. And they'll pay that fee, one of our police officers will inspect it, make sure they have insurance and everything they have to have, and then they'll sign off on it, give that to Ashton. She has a form to fill out, we give them a sticker that lasts for two years.
So the slow-moving vehicle sign, if it's not on there when you inspect it, you're not gonna inspect it?
You know, we currently have a business in town that's picking people up in golf carts, taking them to the doctor's appointments and.
Not that I'm aware of.
I've, I've seen one.
We get there.
I've just seen one.
They used to do that, we, and notice that the twenty-dollar fee is ten dollars a year, it's a two-year period, so we still got our ten-dollar price tag. Entertaining motion, Del, you good? Entertaining motion.
I made, we approved, I make a motion first reading of ordinance twenty-five nine twenty-four.
Motion for Richard to approve ordinance twenty-five nine twenty-four for golf carts. Second for Michael Day, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pledge the same sign, motion carried, Travis, thank you for being here, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Uh, number twelve, discuss consideration to award the bid for real property regarding, regarding point eight-nine zero four acre tract and point zero four-two-three acre tract in the John House survey, abstract number one fifty-nine along Interstate twenty. You got a copy of that, and that is to. Sell that property to Economic Development?
Goods were opened up, um, on Friday, the tenth, at one thirty, in Loma's office. We received one, and that is the copy that you have in front of you from E E B I, submitted by the executive director, Terry Slavens.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to award the bid.
I'll second it. I'm not for dating award the bid, second from Tom, uh, to the Economic Development, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pledge the same sign, somebody put a last Terry, a sticker the whole time, nobody else.
Or just like, yeah, just like going to our general fund?
Yes, it will go back into general fund, we had to pay for the property, um, from Tech Stop, and so now we'll be reimbursed for that, we sold it.
Item number thirteen, discuss considerations, beautification project, you got that one? Kinda see what Savannah put together, and given a, a general idea of what is taking place, and what will take place in the future, do they have any questions about that, or?
Is there anything being done now, as far as, is there like a schedule or anything for the, the maintaining of the streets, the, what you were doing before this?
So, yes, it's really on an as-needed schedule, when, like, when winter hits, we're not gonna have to mow weedy as we were when spring or summer comes in, but we do have, we are utilizing wildfire mitigation. He's currently going through town, trimming trees in certain areas, like down roadways, city roadways. Yeah, well, no, that's different from us, sorry, that is different, the bucket trucks are different from us, our guy is going down with a.
Encore.
Yeah, that's Encore, specified before I think about there, that's.
They're also doing some traffic first, I mean, I could personally play on that one.
The V and the tree is Encore, that is not the city, the city is trimming, um, with a pole saw, um, anything that's overhanging down the streets, not.
Do they have main streets they go down, or are they just?
Bobby has given him a list of areas that are priority that Bobby sees, and that's where he's going right now. Um, the city evaded last fiscal year thirteen properties, um, Terry will talk more about that during his report. They placed eleven, we've placed eleven liens in the fiscal year twenty-five, um, high-traffic areas that Charlie's talking about, sidewalks where we did. Uh, we've asked property, business owners around the square to help us maintain those areas, we send our parks guys down there to empty trash cans, make sure things are up kept. Um, you know, leaves and grass and debris not being put in the storm drains, because that clogs up and doesn't allow it to drain, so some of that stuff we're asking to be maintained. Um, Commerce Street, that was one of the ones that was contained about the vegetation in that area, we went through, Daniel went through, he's here tonight, um, and they scraped that, Daniel and Santiago scraped that as best they could. Um, the next, the next thing to do is somebody to get their, um, license to be able to spray. So that's, um, an ongoing project, to have an employee obtain a license to mitigate that.
Have you started on selecting someone?
Um, I have asked for volunteers, and if I don't have any, then it will just be, who's gonna go to school? I've left it as an option right now until.
Maybe you give them an incentive.
They will, I mean, it's part of like getting your utility license, you know, your water license or sewer license, you're utilizing it for the city.
You get paid extra.
Correct.
I recommend that Ken did such a good job with the fire department, that he did that for us.
And Terry and I are working on a plan for a grant that the West, uh, West Cog puts out to receive funding, funding for a citywide cleanup in the spring for trash, tires, and Terry's also working on a company coming through to do an electronics, uh, donation for people to get rid of electronics. And as we continue with beautification, it's, I think it's an ever-evolving thing, it's gonna continue, and things come up, and as they come up, we address those needs. Um, or if we get complaints for properties, we'll address those. Um, we've started providing a list, Terry started providing a list of properties that he's, um, cited for not being in compliance. Um, and we're going through and enforcing the ordinances that we have on the books, it's just gonna be up to the city to maintain our property, and the property owners to maintain theirs.
One of the things in, in our discussion, although Terry has done this, and you've got a copy, if you haven't looked at it yet, but we'll, when Terry does their presentation, man, is to put the, uh, streets in order. Uh, the addresses where they've worked on in order, so we can see a property while it's being done, I mean, you, we'll, we'll get to that, we don't have to look at it now, but it helps a little bit looking at this, to see, uh, properties that are really a pain in the neck, and people that are working with us to try to help, and you get one deal, and you take care of it fine, and you get twelve of them, and you still might sick, we'll know what those are, and the job being done. I think a big part about this is the spraying, and keeping vegetation out of the street, and the job that code enforcement does is gonna be a major part of what we can get done here, so. Any questions for Savannah about that?
No, I just, I wanna make one comment, which is, I think we've seen tremendous effort being put forward on this over the past year, more so than we've seen in previous years, so. I wanna thank Savannah and her team for doing that.
Yes.
Even though this is a summary, and this is, this is more of a framework for what's gonna happen, I, I would imagine this is gonna continue to grow and develop into something bigger as you go forward, so thank you.
I, I appreciate you having a second here.
Yes, Ken.
Well, it's a start, and we can monitor that, know what's going on, and if something doesn't ride, and I think when we say something that we've got a question about, call down that, and, you know, we're eyes and ears too, along with the city, and getting them to do that, good. Anything else about the beautification project? All right, city manager briefing. Somebody asked Terry something, boy, dude.
Where are you going?
I just got a text, I left my driver's door open on.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
And the GLO construction on the streets, uh, North State Street, Weaver Street, Virginia Street, and Lagavista Street, those are gonna continue to be in open, um. They're working on them, but they're gonna stay on this until, we are currently in a period where we're requesting GLO to fund, um, some specific improvements that have come up on these streets. So I'm not gonna take them off, they're gonna continue to be there until they're checked off my list, but they are still working on those. The buyout portion of the GLO project, um, it's still being processed in the background, GLO is requesting updated tax and income information from property owners. Since the original information was sent in in twenty twenty-one, after the updated information is received, the environmental review will take place, and we'll be able to move forward with that buyout program. I believe there's only six houses on there now, um, so it's dwindled down from what it was. Um, on the pump line, contractors are working the area behind the football stadium, so they're moving pretty quick in this area, there's not roads and stuff that they're having to work around with people, so this is gonna go pretty quick until they hit through the cemetery probably, and then it'll start slowing down some. Tech Stop, there's still no update, they said that they would begin, are in our area around October, they're currently working in Ranger right now, so I think that that might be pushed out some, but it was still on the books for that. Repairs of the fire station are complete, no, tent still needs to be put up, but other than that, the interior is finished.
Wow, you've been here one day, and you already got it done?
Get a good fire chief, that's what happens. Get back to your mind friend, huh?
Um, and then a general street update, before I do this, I wanna just, Daniel's here, so I'm gonna kinda call him out a little bit, but he's done a really good job of helping improve our streets, and getting that done, and working with Emulsion, him and Santiago, and Tom was here forever, and Tom's retired again, but he's still here, so thank you for what you do, Daniel, and thank you, Tom, for what you've done. Um, crews were able to begin chip sealing several streets throughout town, some of those streets that were chip sealed are North Green Street, Linda Street, East Burket Boulevard, Slay Street, and Simmons Street. Um, they potholed with the, um, I just went blank. Durapatcher, that's given them some fits, but we, we are working with, they are working with, um, some dated equipment. So as we kinda go through this, we're gonna have to look at seeing, you know, repairs or purchasing equipment, so that we can make sure that we're maintaining our streets the best that we can. Wildfire mitigation, we currently hired one employee for this position, he's tackled several areas in town, trimming trees, not the V and the tree, um, and cutting back vegetation, he's worked on, uh, weeding sidewalks, areas that are, you know, growing through cracks and trimming trees, and as we get equipment, he'll be doing more. Uh, we held our first annual splish splash pumpkin bash, and it was a really good success, we had about fifty people come out, and I wanna publicly thank Page Outdoors for donating the pumpkins for the event, without them, I don't think that would have worked for us. And all the volunteers we had, some from the junior chamber ambassadors show up, we had some middle, or eighth graders show up to help paint faces, and it was a really good turnout. That's the end of my report.
We didn't mention what the bank did.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, just, we worked on getting ball fields up to speed, uh, Candy Kennedy at the bank, uh, got a group of, I think, thirty kids, and they paid and funded for all that, they painted our ball fields, they're now red.
Instead of forest green.
And, and that's what, and people, and, and people don't know, uh, I was involved when they got painted originally, forest green, and Candy asked, and she asked me today, how do we get forest green, and why were they green, I said, the color of grass. What is hard about this? You can't have a conflict, because, you know, the ball, you can see the ball, whatever color, it's grass, so that's how that came out. Uh, two things, Lagavista Street, how are they doing on the waterline on Lagavista, how is that?
That is complete.
Lagavista's complete.
It's in the ground.
So what is the status of the actual, uh, concrete streets, part of this project, in Lagavista?
They're almost finished with Lagavista.
They've almost finished, okay, yes, uh, six houses on the, um, buyback, whatever you wanna call it, is that the guy that has the rental property?
Yes, most of them.
Is he the only one left standing?
Yes.
Is that what that is, wow, okay.
Are those houses that we're gonna, I can't, I don't really remember, vaguely remember what this was all about.
They'll be torn down and can't really.
You can't build back because it's a floodway.
They'll be torn down and can't be reworked, within the flood.
Water pass through faster.
Okay, it's a great deal for the guy that owns it, but he probably would have never sold it outside.
Yeah, that's true.
Anything else for Savannah? Two copies of the same thing. Okay, here's, totally enforcement, totally compliant, totally enforcement, totally somebody.
Okay, so in September, we opened the month with seventy cases, we opened new, uh, fifty-one new cases, we closed forty-three, leaving a total of seventy-eight at the end of the month. Um, there were a total of a hundred and five violations opened, a hundred. Um, there were a total of a hundred and five violations open, a hundred and ten closed. Um, we wrote thirty one citations. At for a total of fourteen thousand five hundred and nine dollars in uh fines. Um, we dismissed six hundred and forty three dollars worth of fines um for that month. Um, so for the year to date, um, we wrote three hundred and thirteen cases. Uh, we closed three hundred and five cases. We issued eighty seven citations for a total of thirty nine thousand seven hundred and fifty two dollars. Um, seven thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars worth of fines were actually paid. Uh, we dismissed tw- two thousand eight hundred and twenty two uh uh dollars worth of fines uh for the year. And then we a- abated thirteen cases or thirteen properties. And abatement is anywhere from mowing the property to tearing down the house. And as you know, in December, actually, of the first quarter, we tore down a house over on Patterson Street. Um, we filed eleven liens. Um, the total of abatements was seventeen thousand thirty eight dollars. We we filed eleven liens, seventeen thousand two hundred and forty seven dollars. Um, the other two liens we actually filed this month. Uh, the timing, the way it worked, it actually fell into October, so those will show up for the next, the next report. Um, we're currently working in abatement on a demolished church on North Oak Street. Um, property owner went in and demolished it and then it kinda went downhill from there, so we're having it abated. Um, there is a contract on this property, it is being sold. Um, and we will, um, as soon as our abatement is over, we bill the property owner and the property owner and the current buyer are working out the details on who's paying us back. Um, so hopefully we won't have to go to filing a lien on that one. Uh, we're actually taking bids right now on cleanup of another property. And um that's pretty much it. Um, as you can see in that new report that I've I've provided, um there's a couple, there's a few addresses that you see, there's quite a few violations. And just so you know, a citation, anytime I write a citation, it shows up as a new case. Because you can't use the same case number in the court if it's sent for multiple violations. Um, so you can, you can see that evidence in in this report.
Each sentence being closed, can we assume that it was taken care of?
Yes.
Or paid, fine was paid or?
Yes, if it was, if it was a, uh, actually, if it's a citation, once it leaves my my department and goes to court, I close it at the end of the month because I can't do anything else with it. Because it's all up to the court from from then on, um, so.
So we don't know if they've actually been taking care of it or not.
Right, right. But.
Is there some way we could follow that?
I'll look into that, um, because there should be a way I can get Dina, Dina can show me.
Because if it just goes from you to Dina and then it stays an open fine.
Yeah.
For ages, then you still have that property that.
But you still monitor that property.
Yes, I I'm continuing it, yes, because if it's not, if it hasn't been taken care of, I'm continuing to write citations. Um, and then even if they come in and take care of the citation and the property is still not, they're gonna get another citation, so.
You haven't done through those yet, you'll go back to a property that's listed forty two times.
Okay.
Yeah. Forty two to, yeah.
That's why I asked him to do it. I kept seeing that, and that's why I said, if it's been altered by property, that'll tell us the story. Let me ask, and I don't, you don't mean the the numbers saying, on your report, fines act assessed is thirty nine thousand seven hundred and fifty two. Okay? Now, below that, fines paid, they've only paid seven thousand. Where is that thirty two thousand dollars?
It's still sitting over there in the court.
Waiting for something to happen.
Yes.
So to get down here where fines dismissed is twenty eight hundred, so that's part of that.
Yes.
Two lines down, and then total fines paid or whatever is nine thousand.
If they served time or if they were dismissed.
This, that's the total of those two, okay, alright.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for, any more questions for Terry?
If I may, real quick, just tagging what Terry uh said to this report, keep you guys an update. Our townhomes are continuing with their expansion. And um they sent an updated set of plans, they're wanting to add a pool now out there. So we've got the uh, an updated set of uh site plans for them, we've approved that, we're just waiting on the full company to submit a permit for that. Um, the tiny home ordinance that we discussed, Savannah and I are working on getting something to you guys. Hopefully by the end of the week for y'all to look over, as far as what we see has a starting off point for uh the ordinance to, for tiny homes here in Eastland. Uh, we pulled very heavily from Hudson, Texas. Uh, they have a really nice clean ordinance, but it's gonna have to be tweaked to work for us.
Um, how big is that town compared to?
Uh, I gotta go back and look, I've looked at a bunch of them, I can't remember their population on hand. But I'll, I'll look for it and and I'll include that on the information. Um, but we hope to have that cleaned up and and to you guys by this weekend. Um, and in addition to that, as far as that mass rezoning of of homes that we talked about a while back, I've got those identified. I've got a letter um crafted up to send out. I'm just waiting to hear back from my lien on notification issue. This just in, Hudson has a population of four thousand eight hundred and forty nine people, has it in twenty twenty census.
And Hudson is where?
By Lufkin.
By Lufkin?
By Lufkin.
Okay.
So all the other ordinances that we found are very vague and wide open. They, they, it, it leaves a lot of room for um misuse, I'll, I'll say, like how, you know, Chief Fitz was talking about with the um the golf cart ordinance, there's, there's something there in a lot of towns, but they are very wide open. And it, and it just, we, it opens us up to, you know, somebody misusing the the ordinances for what we're putting in for, so.
Okay.
I wanna give you guys something that's, that's sensible, but, you know, it's lined out, so we don't have any questions or surprises.
Yeah. Anything else for Tony or Terry? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Chief Fitz?
So the uh, both of September, the police department answered three hundred and sixty few calls for service. Six arrests were made, forty nine reports were generated, we did forty six agency arrests, nine hundred and seventy seven business checks. Twelve traffic crashes, four domestic disturbances. Uh, eleven cases were filed with the district attorney's office, one juvenile, and we did twenty three open records requests. On the traffic side of things, uh, we wrote a hundred and thirty six citations, three hundred and thirty nine warnings. Four hundred and seventy five traffic contacts. On the animal control side of things, the two animal trucks, we had answered two hundred and seventy five calls for service. That's steadily going up, but I don't know what's going on, we, we get twenty animal calls every day. Uh, in fact, two days ago, they got like a four hundred pound pig, we had to do something with it, so we never know, chickens, pigs. She wrote, they wrote ten citations, twenty two warnings, uh, twenty two animals were impounded, fifteen were adopted. We didn't have any quarantines. Uh, we had two stolen vehicles recovered. Uh, thank you to uh the Eastland Pistol Club and Tom for setting that up for us. We completely, completely transitioned to the M seventeen weapon system, so we're glad to have that changed over. Uh, Officer Duck and Officer Officer Forum are both moving into the final stage of FTO. In fact, they are both out on their own right now and doing well. So we're proud of both of those officers. Um, for a total, we had four thousand and eleven calls for service last year. Um, we had a hundred and seventy eight people were arrested, five hundred and ninety agency assists, eleven thousand and seventy four business checks. Another thing that I'm really proud of on our business checks is we had zero business burglaries last year. We had one the year before, and that's the entire purpose in making those guys check those buildings and that. Now, we've had a few thefts, we've had some shoplifting, those type things, those numbers are pretty small uh in comparison to other cities, but we had zero business burglaries and I'm real proud of for that. We, we worked a hundred and forty four traffic crashes, a hundred and twenty three domestic disturbances. We filed a hundred and eighty nine cases with the district attorney's office, eleven juveniles were filed on, one hundred and ninety seven open records requests, and I don't know if y'all know much about open records, but that's become a monster. And Ashton takes care of that for us for the most part, um, every day we get a request to open records, yeah. We had two thousand sixty two citations were issued, four thousand six hundred and fifty eight warnings were issued for a total of six thousand seven hundred and twenty traffic crashes, one thousand six hundred and eighteen calls for service on the animal control side of things. Eighty citations issued, fifty warrants, a hundred and eighty six animals were impounded and ninety five were adopted out. And we had seven quarantine. So it was, it was a fairly standard year for us, about level with last year. Next, next meeting, I'll have those comparisons for you from last year to this year. Um, would like to say welcome to Sean again, we decided about having our fire chief here and Erica. So that's the boss, so if you need anything out of Sean. We're excited to have them here, we're extremely happy to have y'all part of our community, anything we can do to help, so.
Uh, if I'm assuming all this is right, your business checks doubled from where the previous year, what you guys are doing.
And we had a, toward the first part of the year, um, I more defined what I wanted in a business check, so, um, but they are doing a lot of business checks and I was very. And that's, that's the reason why I have a bird, I mean, they're, they're getting out, they're shaking doors, they're looking inside businesses, and that's what I wanted to do.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Well, Chief Ryden, Tom Ryden, fire chief, this is his first day?
Yes, sir.
Breaking in right.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Council of the City, an honor for me to be here. Um, I would just like to publicly thank Chief Fitz for his leadership and taking on two departments, that's a huge task. And uh, there's nothing but good things. I know he set me up for success to carry the leadership of the fire department.
True.
Where it needs to be, appreciate that.
Me too.
So for September, the fire department responded to three building fires, five grass fires, forty four medical assists, uh, four major accidents with injuries, ten with no injuries, a couple of gas leaks. And then some miscellaneous other, its own calls for a total of incidents of uh ninety four. And from what I can tell, it's pretty average in St. Peter's for this month.
Then you'll provide a report in the future that shows monthly, uh, instead of just a month at a time. And the reason why that trend line is really important, like all of us, we're used to it, you see that they all do, all of ours do. So as you get your feet wet, you know, next month, a month after, if we're doing it where we can see, because the trend lines tell us how busy we're getting, how, where are we, what's happening, and and the great jobs you guys are doing. Because I, I'm really interested in how much we get called outside of the city, uh, how much we help from the county and those type things. They tell us a lot about our contracts with the county, how important that is, how much we help with uh the ambulance service. Y'all spend a lot, you probably already found that out, and we make a lot of calls with the ambulance service and supporting them, and those are really important. And and uh Tim didn't try to pull all that together, that's not a problem, and all he has, his hands pretty full. But if you get your feet wet and get into this, we'd all appreciate having, you know, break it out. As you get to it, you'll, you'll find, you probably have that data somewhere, sitting there.
Absolutely, not at all, I'll definitely create it and make it where it's more visible.
Well, the trend thing helps, I think it's important, I'm a trend guy, and we see all that and it helps us know what all's going on. You twos, you get your uh hands in the pie and see all that, and so I appreciate, appreciate you being here and look forward to working with you. So if everybody is not aware of this, he has a daughter that lives here, the second grade school teacher.
Yes, sir.
So he has a grandchild here, two grandchildren here, so it's really hard to get him to move here. Thank you, Sean, any questions for Sean?
Yes.
Welcome, chief.
So I just want you to know, the, for our twenty second year at the airport, we're supporting the National Forest Service, Texas A and M. We have a helicopter right now at the airport for fire, so we'll ferry fire, let dispatch know, and they and we'll launch it. They can't self launch, but they're here to support you, and that's one of the things we do at the airport, and this is our twenty second year.
Oh, appreciate that.
So you know that.
Okay. Oh, Minister Ford, yeah, there's, very close enough to Minister Ford.
She had a total of two hundred and twenty seven cases filed, disposed of a hundred, eighty seven warrants issued. Um, city revenue fourteen thousand seventy three dollars, state revenue eight thousand three hundred and thirty one dollars. Total year end, three hundred and fifty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars.
And down at the bottom, the most important number is we increased nineteen thousand dollars over the previous year of city revenue. Good work. Next.
Move your chair.
No. Hey, there was a couple of things in there.
Oh, there's stuff.
About the cemetery.
Cemetery?
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, yeah, the cemetery thing, this is, uh, somebody did a, a rant and rave and it's anonymous, we don't know what it is, but what I really think is important is they've been dealing with the uh, quite some time, their mom passed away in twenty sixteen, and they couldn't say enough the nice things about how good our cemetery has been maintained and the work that goes on there. And that, that is, we, we talk about city cleanup and doing all of that. Those same people, they're expected to clean the streets and do all that, the same people maintaining our, our cemetery, and it's a great compliment to our city and to the work that you guys are doing and what they're doing, so we thank you that. And also, the, uh, Rome, we got a note here, thank you for trusting Starly Monument Company to take part in uh creating this World War Two memorial for Eastland Cemetery. It has been an honor to serve and to assist you with your unique memorialization needed at this time. Mem- memorable, that's a big word, memorization at this time, and that's from Starly Monument and what you're doing out there, so what is that all about?
That was from the April third tornado wind event, it knocked over that, that uh half of that.
Okay, yeah.
Monuments.
Yeah.
Broke it, broke it in half.
They helped put it all back together.
They put it back together, that, that one and another one as well.
Thank you for doing that, you've been overseeing the cemetery now for a while, I appreciate all you're doing, uh, getting that done. Got a motion to adjourn from, I think, Richard, who said, Tom seconded that, any other discussion on Thursday I. I hope same thing, motion carried.